I think I'm going to have to. Where is he?
All right, we're having four public hearings. Anybody want to talk?
If he doesn't come on, I am going to do it like you.
I don't know. I mean, why do people ask me these questions?
Ready on the board? I can't believe you.
We're going to call this August 17th council meeting to order and ask Clerk Cottrell.
Council President Smith.
Here.
Council Protein Green.
Here.
Council Member Lyda.
Here.
Council Member Middlebrooks.
Here.
Council Member Murphy. Council Member Pazy.
Here.
Council Member Shaw.
Here.
If everyone please stand for the invocation and the pledge.
Father, Son, and God, our Father, thank you for being here with us and for your protection, guidance, and wisdom. We pray for healing and strength and love to abound in the name of your son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
I'd like to make one quick announcement in case nobody heard me earlier or have come in since. We have a signing sheet for anybody that would like to speak during the public comments section of tonight's meeting. Chair is open for a motion on the minutes.
Move for approval of the minutes without reading.
Second. Motion second. All favors say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. You guys have it. In the announcements section, first I would like to say that we're going to have a special called meeting on September 1st at noon to canvass the upcoming elections. At that point, the city will officially declare who the winners are in the various seats and identify any possible runoffs. And that will be in the new council chambers, remodel chambers. After tonight, we're through here at the senior center, and I know we're going to be glad to get back to City Hall. Hopefully, y'all will as well. Mr. Mayor, do you have anything tonight? Each year, the United Way chooses a few seniors from the 28 senior centers across Jefferson County to receive the Outstanding Senior Citizens Award. These awards are given to seniors who have done obviously an outstanding job at making their mark right here in our community. And tonight, we get to bestow this honor on two of Hoover's own. And I would like for Bill and Bill Lees, Bill and Jerry Smith, would y'all come up just a second? If you don't mind just standing right there in the front, we'd appreciate it. Facing those deals there. And let me just read a little something about these two gentlemen. Bill Lees is the first outstanding senior we want to recognize this evening. And Bill's been involved in numerous areas of our city over the years, including 10-plus years on the Veterans Committee, spearheading a campaign to build a senior center, driving for the Hoover Express program for seniors, and many more. So we're very grateful on how Bill is always willing to go the extra mile for the seniors and just to make sure what they need. Just a wonderful, outstanding individual. We're grateful to Bill, and we'll present you with your award in just a second. And then Jerry, Jerry Smith, also receiving the Outstanding Senior Award. He's involved in really all generations of his community here. He drives for the Hoover Express program. He works as a volunteer tax preparer, very, very important. He's with United, as part of United Way. He's driving for the Senior Choir of Trinity United Methodist. Most recently, he's been involved with the Alabama 4-H program that teaches important financial lessons to high school students. We're grateful for how Jerry uses his skills to improve the lives of those in our community. So I would just like to thank each of you gentlemen, and I know what you do for our community and how you service and how much you love our community. So thank you very much for being nominated and winning these Outstanding Senior Awards. Mr. Lees, wasn't it you and your wonderful wife that started the Piggy Bank Program raising money for the senior center?
I think she was front and center on that one.
Congratulations. Okay, I received a request from one of my colleagues that because his transportation was messed up at the work session, that Mr. James Smith be allowed to speak in the report section. So if someone, Mr. Lyda, would you assist Mr. Smith to the microphone?
Mayor Brocato and Hoover Council, this is my third, actually fourth, presentation to the council regarding Hoover Express. A valuable transportation system for the visually impaired and the elderly in Hoover. Madura, Pfizer, Johnson &amp; Johnson are working the third and final stage of the COVID-19 vaccine. We probably won't have it by year end, and Hoover Express will be back in operation. November of last year, 2019, Dana Stewart called from the center and informed me that she was canceling my service Monday and Wednesday morning to Mass at Prince of Peace, even though that she provided that for five and a half months, June through November, when she called. I called Mayor Brocato and asked for assistance. He concurred with Dana Stewart Henson. It is significant to know that the mayor, pre-COVID-19, after he became mayor, frequented the center for lunch, nightly dinners, dances, and became friends with Ms. Henson. A native Nashvegan, I was born with a normal recessive hereditary ophthalmological condition called gyratotrophy of the choroid and retina. Corrected to 2020 until the age of 23. I made it through college. Four vitroretinal surgeries, a gene therapy yet to come, relocated from Chicago to Homewood to Hoover, August 2010. In 2011, Mayor Tony Patelas introduced me to Hoover Express. He introduced me to Tracy Benzett, manager of Hoover Express. She set me up. When Tracy was on vacation, 2012, Dana Stewart, now Henson, called and said, "It's not permissible for you to call at 4:00 a.m. on the designated days to book your Hoover Express." When Tracy returned from vacation the following week, I called her, told her about the call from Dana. She said, "James, I don't care what time you call on the designated day, as long as it's up until 10:00 a.m. Continue as always." Tracy was promoted to event manager here at the center. Her successor was Kimberly Smith Wedgeworth, no relation. When Kimberly was on vacation, November 2019, after seven years, that's when Dana called me again, and she threatened me this time. Not only told me that I could not call at 4:00, but she said, "If you call at 4:00, I will terminate your Hoover Express service." And that's when she also informed me that she would no longer transport me to Prince of Peace. As I said earlier, she's playing God, preventing me from worshiping God at Prince of Peace. Mayor Brocato and Dana Stewart Henson are a select few who have a proclivity to believe that someone who is visually impaired is mentally impaired, and they attempt to take advantage of us. But Hoover Express was not the first time Mayor Brocato denied me service and other residents of Hoover's service, transportation service. November 2016, Frank Brocato was sworn in as mayor. Two weeks later, the newly appointed director of the BJCTA, Birmingham Jefferson County Transit Authority, Barbara Murdock canceled service, max buses, max paratransit buses in the morning and in the evening. So I called the mayor, asked for help. I said, "You need to call Barbara and the BJCTA and ask them to reinstate it because people are getting to work late with the service." He said, "I can't do that." I asked to meet with him the next day. This was the second week in December. He said, "I can't meet with you for three weeks." So it was January. And on the designated day that I showed up at City Hall to meet with Mayor Brocato, I was alarmed to find in the conference room Barbara Murdock and seven of her colleagues from the BJCTA. I asked for the meeting, not her. I didn't ask for her to be in the meeting, but Mayor Brocato invited her and her colleagues. In that meeting, Barbara Murdock said they canceled the service at the Directive of the FTA, the Federal Transit Administration in Washington. I had proof otherwise. I attempted to play it on my, play a text to prove her differently on my iPhone, could not get a signal. So I stood up to get a better signal. Mayor Brocato stood up beside me, put his hand on my shoulder, and in a loud voice said, "Sit down." Nefariously, Mayor Brocato dismissed me from the meeting moments later, and he continued to meet with Barbara Murdock and the BJCTA. I later learned that Barbara Murdock was coercing Mayor Brocato for the city of Hoover to increase their payment to the BJCTA from 2016, $63,000, to $20,000 more, $83,000 in 2017. A new mayor with a relatively new council coerced you, council, into meeting Barbara Murdock's demand. You approved it on Monday night, 6 March, 2017. The following morning at 6:00 a.m., less than 12 hours after you met Barbara Murdock's demand, she sent me a text. Hey, Siri, play first text from Barbara Murdock.
Barbara said, "Mr. Smith, starting next week, you should be able to get your 5:00 a.m. appointment. I got approval from FDA. We are reprogramming route match this week. I wish it was that simple. I am aware and ordering new buses by the end of the year. I spoke with the maintenance director, who said he is modifying the suspension on one to test for a smoother ride. Want to reply?"
No. Murdock's reference to the 5:00 a.m. were my 5:00 a.m. pickups Monday, Wednesday, Friday to Gold's Gym. She said the FTA approved reinstatement of the service. She lied. I spoke with the FTA. They were never involved. You approved, council, for reinstating the service. Would someone please hand this to the council? This is a document most of you have seen, the mayor has seen it. You don't have to read it now, but I'll tell you what it's basically. I met with Tony Patelas in the city council, 1 August, 2011, regarding the BJCTA, similar problems. They cut the service. Following my meeting, a call was made to the president of the BJCTA, asking them to restore the service. They did. No more money, no new invoices, no ransom. After you approved Barbara Murdock's demand, council, March of 2017, later that year, she was caught stealing funds from the BJCTA and was terminated. I'm angry with you, Mayor Brocato, because you have twice denied me service for transportation in the city of Hoover. The animosity you and Dana Stewart Henson have for me is obvious. But when I called you in December of 2016, asking for help, it was not just for me, it was for all other residents in Hoover using the BJCTA buses and paratransit buses to get to work. I told you at that time, they were two hours late for work, they were being docked, and you did nothing. You did not make a call. Instead, you put their jobs in jeopardy for two and one-half months. Counsel, I'm disappointed in you. Because you did not do your due diligence in 2016 and 2017 to determine why you should pay Barbara Murdock and the BJCTA $20,000 more. You met the demand of Barbara Murdock and never knew why. I'm tired, and I'm finished.
Anything you want to say? All right, we're going to move on to the consent agenda.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
You have a gentleman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Lees, come on up.
Mr. Council President, council members, Mr. Mayor, as you already noted, I'm a Hoover Express driver. I've been a Hoover Express driver for something over 15 years. And in view of James' discussion of Hoover Express from a rider's viewpoint, I want to take a couple more minutes. I hate to beat on this for too much of your time, but take a few minutes to give you the driver's perspective of the Hoover Express. As you've heard, riders call in, decide to request a ride. We operate four days a week. Mondays and Wednesdays are for Hoover residents to go to any Hoover business, primarily shopping. We don't take them to shop in Vestavia Hills or Pelham. On Tuesdays and Thursdays are for medical appointments, doctors, labs, you know, you name it, wherever. And for years, the basic, there've been some basic ground rules. You know, one of them is, you know, the type of errand or type of trip each day. No appointments to be made before 9:00 or after 12:00. And part of that was for the drivers. You can't get all the drivers, you can't guarantee, shall we say, that all the drivers will be able to get to, you know, now the senior center. When it started, it was the rec center. Get the car, get someone, get them to an appointment before 9:00. It could be done, and it was done. I think James may have mentioned that we took a lady to St. Vincent's 119 for years, picked her up as early as we possibly could because she exercised for an hour. She had an honorary lifetime membership. I drove her to St. Vincent's 119 after she turned 100. She'd exercised for an hour, and as you can understand, the length of the trip, over there, an hour back, driver's discretion was that we would pick her up as early as we could. It wasn't she didn't have an appointment, it was agreement between the driver and the rider. When are the, shall we say, the norm on errand days? And to a certain extent, on the medical trip days? The norm is that the driver gets a list prior or the day before, the name, you know, their residence, where they're going. And some of them, some of them do have appointments, like hair salons. But if you're going shopping, there isn't a specific time involved. And it's the driver's discretion to figure out how to do that. How to get to the rider, pick them up, take them to their destination, pick them up afterwards and get them back home. And I've had as many as six riders. And the majority of them are very understanding, very appreciative of the city for providing the vehicles and the administration, if you will, of the service, and appreciative of the volunteer drivers and recognize they can't always get what they want, when they want it, how they want it. And again, the drivers, at their discretion, sign up for when to drive. We have a meeting every, you know, every two months, try to fill out the calendar. We've got drivers that do not want to drive Monday or Monday and Wednesday. They just don't like, you know, the situation of hauling groceries for ladies. Some of them, some of them have a little bit of a difficulty of getting around, so they don't want to drive Monday and Wednesday. They want to drive Tuesday and Thursday. Others don't want to drive Tuesday and Thursday because of the varying schedule of a medical appointment. Again, at the driver's discretion of which days they sign up to drive, when there are no drivers or we need more drivers, then the staff tries to fill those slots, you know? They get a call, "Could you pretty please drive tomorrow? We got two ladies," and so on. And they work very hard to try to fill the, you know, fill the slots so people can be served. And I think they do a commendable job. And like I say, I've been driving for 15 years and have driven James Smith many times. In fact, he called me to tell me of his plans to speak. And we must have spent a half hour, and I said, "Well, to finish up," I says, "James, you know, I disagree with you. Disagree with your views and your position, but I hope we can still be friends."
President, quick question.
Ms. Shaw.
Is this, sir, this is a volunteer program, correct?
Ms. Lees?
Sir, you volunteer for this program, right? You're not compensated, right?
Yes, all the, all the drivers are volunteers, and all of them.
I'll just say thank you very much for what you do, because obviously it's a service to your community, it's a service to the people who need it, and thank you very much. And that's all.
Well, I'm just hoping that there will be people around to do it for me when I'm in the stage where I need it. What's the saying, paying it forward?
We appreciate y'all.
Thank you. Mr. Rice?
Mr. President, members of the council, when Mr. Smith originally came to speak on this, the mayor had directed me to look into the nature of the program. I think we just heard a great recitation of how it works. Just a couple of things that we found out, as Mr. Lees mentioned, well, first, it's important to note, this program has not operated since March 18th due to the COVID situation. So there is no current Hoover Express service being provided to anyone, and we don't know when it'll return. Clearly, the senior center will probably be the last city facility to go back online, and this is an extension of that. So the program is volunteer-led. Ms. Shaw, thank you for asking about that. We are very much at the discretion of the drivers, as Mr. Lees indicated. There's not a set schedule. They drive when they can, on the days that they're able to. There is a drivers committee that's part of Hoover New Horizons. You're all very familiar with New Horizons. And the committee actually sets out and formulates policy with assistance and involvement of Dana and her staff, but that includes the hours of operation. So it was the drivers who determined long ago that the first guaranteed appointment could be 9:00. And I think part of the situation that's come up with Mr. Smith is that his church mass begins at 8:30. And so, as was mentioned, there were some time periods where certain drivers were willing to come in early, but we're, you know, we're at their mercy. And if they're not able to come in and drive, then we can't guarantee him a ride to that. The rules of the program have already been amended one time by the drivers committee at Mr. Smith's request, and that had to do with how many stops a rider could request while they're on their route. So he wanted to be able to make more stops than they allowed. They met and discussed it with the staff, and they agreed that they would allow additional stops. So I think, I think there's been a lot of goodwill there. In the wake of this situation, Dana and her staff have called around to 12 different area churches, not in an attempt to try to get Mr. Smith to change churches, but to try to research what type of transportation ministries some of those churches might have, might be willing to extend to him, even though he's a non-member, or perhaps his church could model a similar program. They are very willing to help coordinate Mr. Smith with individual drivers who might be willing and able to meet his timeframe needs. So they are willing to mediate that conversation, talk to their drivers group, and say, "Look, you know, he habitually would like to attend mass at 8:30 on a Monday. Is there anybody who can help with that?" So that, that offer's absolutely on the table. They've also agreed to change their, the staff has agreed to change their practice on how they receive the voicemails about making reservations. And I know at one point, I don't, I don't know if it was mentioned tonight, but I know at one point it was mentioned that he gets up very early and he likes to call at about 4:00 a.m. and leave his reservation outside of that timeframe, and they've agreed to work with that. So, so he'll be able to leave a voicemail at any time he chooses, and they will work him into the route as best they can. You heard from Mr. Lees. On Thursday night, Susan Gilliland was here. Unfortunately, I know that Mr. Smith wasn't able to be with us. She is a rider who has used the service for many years, and she was here and prepared to speak as another individual living with disabilities about her experience. And my understanding is her experience is very different from, from. And my understanding is her experience is very different from Mr. Smith's. And the last thing I want to leave with you is that during this time of COVID closure, it would be very easy, I think, for the staff here to kind of sit back and coast. But what they've done is they've taken on personally delivering the meals that previously were delivered by other senior volunteer drivers. Fortunately, our drivers are in the risk group clearly for COVID-19, as are the meal clients. So we've not been able to use our Meals on Wheels drivers, so the staff has done that. But more importantly, they have started a campaign many, many weeks ago of conducting phone visits and socially-distanced personal visits to hundreds of New Horizons members. So Dana and her staff get on the phone, they get on Zoom, they get in the car, they go to people's homes. They follow all the rules, they wear a mask, they stay out on the porch. But if you think about the vulnerability of the people that they work with, that is so critical. I mean, many of you have participated in events here at the senior center. You understand the socialization that takes place for these people. And sadly, that is all the interaction that some of them have. And Dana and her staff have not sat in their office, and they've not played solitaire. They've initiated a campaign to make sure that they are still taking care of our seniors in any way possible, including going to their homes for those that they know are in the most critical need of that human contact. We make a lot, and we should, and we make a lot out of our police department and our fire department and their accreditation processes, and we're all very proud of them for that. But let's remember that the Hoover Senior Center was the first city function to ever become accredited. And they are the first accredited senior center in the state of Alabama. And I'm going to tell you, I've known Dana a long time. And Dana and Tracy, Kimberly, Abby, we have fantastic employees. You hear me say that a lot because it's true. But if I needed to send an employee somewhere in the city to learn how to love people, I would send them right here. Because that's what those four ladies do every single day. So some of the characterization of Dana is unfortunate. In my experience, it's completely incorrect. And I'm just not going to leave the podium without saying that she does a wonderful job, and I wouldn't want anybody else in her position. Thank you. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have about the program.
Thank you, and I appreciate the explanation. You had mentioned another person that wanted to speak?
Yes, sir.
Is she here tonight by chance?
I don't think she was able to be back. No, she was here on Thursday for work session.
Would she like to speak at the next work session or the next council meeting in the reports section?
I think we can make contact with her and find out.
Find out, and if she'd like, we'll make room for her, too.
Thank you. Any other questions for me? All right, thank you.
Thank you. Now we're going to move along to our consent agenda. Item seven's payment of the bills. Mr. Corley, why don't I let you handle the legalese for the other three?
Yes, sir. Item eight, resolution 6300-20 adopts the annual transportation plan for the fiscal year 2021 to meet the requirements associated with Alabama Act Number 2019-2, Bill Number H2, as approved in March 2019 by the Alabama House of Representatives and the Alabama Senate. Item nine, resolution number 630120 authorizes the mayor and/or his designee to execute and submit an application and any other documents necessary to apply for grant funds from ADECA for the purpose of funding lighting upgrades at the Hoover Municipal Complex and the Police Operations Building. Item 10, resolution 630320 authorizes Mayor Brokato to execute a contract with the Administrator-Director of Courts Judicial Branch, State of Alabama, for the Hoover Municipal Court Referral Officer Program that is executed with the State of Alabama on an annual basis.
Move for approval of all items on the consent agenda?
Second. I have a motion and a second. All of these were gone over in depth on Thursday. There's a short statement at the beginning of the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Dis opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Moving to our regular agenda, resolution 6302-20, Mr. Corley.
This resolution declares weed and vegetation nuisances due to the abundance of weeds and/or grass on the properties listed in the resolution.
We're going to start with a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against? It's my understanding we're down to only one property. The other two have become compliant. And tonight, we're going to be talking about 1813 Charlotte Drive. It appears that this dwelling is empty. Mr. Mack, are you here? There you go. Just a quick update for the public hearing portion?
Yes, sir. We just had the one property tonight, 1813 Charlotte Drive. They have received notice, and a picture was taken today. The house, actually, there's supposed to be somebody living in there. They're working on and getting him evicted. But, you know, that's all I have right now. They're working on it, so.
Does that structure have utilities?
Sir?
Does that structure have utilities?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Very good. Any questions for Mr. Mack? Thank you, sir. Anyone care to speak for or against in this public hearing? Seeing none, I'm closing the public hearing. And now we shall move for a motion on the resolution.
Move for approval of resolution 630220.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Once again, any comments or questions from the council or the audience? Seeing hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Dis opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Next, we have ordinance 20-2488, Mr. Corley.
This ordinance amends the Hoover zoning ordinance to rezone the property located at 1331 Alfred Avenue from Hoover R1 to Hoover R4 with the conditions noted in the ordinance.
We're going to start again with a public hearing. If there's anyone to speak for or against, this has to do with a Montessori school. Did I say that right, Mr. Shaw?
Sir.
That will be occupying that property. Anything from the audience or the council? Seeing and hearing none, we will close the public hearing, and chair is open for a motion.
Mr. President, I move for adoption of ordinance 20-2488.
Second. A motion and a second. Once again, any comments or questions, council or audience? Yes?
This is Mac Martin, city planner. Is the motion including the four conditions that we discussed at the work session?
Mr. Shaw?
Madam Clerk, is that's included as part of the record and part of the motion, correct?
It is now, if you say it is.
Well, the ordinance it says is that it is to, for R4, multifamily residential district, with the condition that it is for the sole purpose of being used for a new Montessori school and that there will be no multifamily residential use for the property.
Was there anything else?
Did that meet the conditions?
There are four other conditions listed and exhibited. Oh, I'm sorry, that's resolution.
That's for the next resolution? Okay.
Was that for the next resolution? Okay.
That's for resolution 628720.
Very good.
So it appeared this is complete mispreference.
Yes, sir. Mr. Martin, you're in agreement?
Yes, sir.
Very good. We've got a motion and a second. Once again, any comments or questions from the council or the audience? Seeing and hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Loda?
Aye.
Dr. Metalworks?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
The ordinance is adopted. Next is resolution 6287-20, Mr. Corley.
This resolution approves a conditional use for property located at 1331 Alfred Avenue for the sole purpose of it being used for a new Montessori school, subject to the conditions noted in the resolution.
Would you identify those four? Mr. Martin?
Yes, sir.
Would you identify?
The conditions I have are, A, the applicant is to work with adjacent property owner at 2112 Blue Ridge Boulevard. The clear underbrush is required to improve site distance. Secondly, a new parking lot will be comprised of permeable pavers, or proper drainage facilities shall be installed with new parking lot construction. Either method should be approved before and by the city engineer with site plan review. Thirdly, that the tenant occupying the single-family residence is to vacate the premises prior to the Montessori school occupying the site. And fourth and final, no other use other than daycare can occupy the site.
Okay, the third use or the third restriction is not in the resolution for that.
Okay.
It will need to be, if y'all would like to add that, we will need to repost that. We have the conditional use is approved for sole purpose of being used for the new Montessori school with no multifamily residential use for the property and subject to the following. Applicant is to work to clear underbrush as required to improve site distance. And the new parking lot to be comprised of permeable pavers or proper drainage facilities shall be installed with a new parking lot construction with either method to be approved by the city engineer. These items can be addressed with a permit site plan set. These restrictions were what was approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission and put into their motion.
Mr. Martin, do you need that fourth item included?
That no other use other than a daycare can occupy the site? I think, it sounds like we covered that in the zoning itself.
Yeah, to the sole purpose of being used for the school. So the one that he had stated was that anyone living on the property would need to vacate the premises. That is not in there, but it does state the sole purpose of being used for the new Montessori school with no multifamily residential use for the property. So that...
Mr. Corley, would that satisfy the...
Well, Mr. President, I know, I made the motion, so I know the lack of residents are clearing. I know that additional thing was in the motion. So the question is, was it on the motion on the zoning? Or was it on the motion of the... That item was in there somewhere because I made the motion on it.
Yeah, it was discussed, but I'm not for sure if it was worded. I tried to word it exactly as it was worded. And that might have been how you worded it, for the sole purpose.
Yeah, I remember distinctly making a motion that the occupant had to leave that house because that was a big, that's why we continued it.
Okay, I'll go back through that planning and zoning motion, and I can repost this, and we can have it as another first and second read.
This being a resolution, does it require a first and second reading?
Well, I have to paste it, and we have to notify for it.
So a motion can't be made from the floor?
That's correct.
Mr. Corley?
Mr. President, city planner here. I will note that we received communication from the listing agent that the resident that was there, his lease was set to terminate at the conclusion of the month of July. I know we were in July when we were making the decision at the planning commission level to formulate the recommendation. We included it as a condition this go-around for council consideration, just to be on the safe side. But I do have documentation showing that the lease was to be concluded at the end of the month of July, if that helps.
Mr. President, I mean, we can move forward, I mean, if we're satisfied with it. But I remember distinctly making that motion as part of the motion. I mean, that was a lot of back and forth about it. So, I mean, obviously, we got to get to the bottom of that. I don't know if that's enough to stop this or continue it. But we've got to figure out why motions aren't carrying forward like they should.
Mr. Corley, the way that it's stated legally, does that satisfy being the sole purpose? Does that satisfy that the dwelling that would have been on the property or is on the property cannot be ever used as residence again? Or do we need to have that more plainly stated?
The question of whether there's current occupancy, I think, would be relevant.
Yes, sir.
I can speak to that.
Your name and your street name?
Joe, excuse me.
Your name, street name and zip code?
Yes, sir. Joseph Miller, Civil Engineer, Land Surveyor, MTTR Engineers, 2500 South Lake Park, Hoover, Suite 1035244. Lease has been terminated, there's no tenant there anymore, there will never be another tenant there. He's moved on to another place. And so we're very happy to comply with no residential use in the property. And so that isn't the intent, we don't want to do it, we're not going to do it, so.
And I understand that, and I wish y'all all the success. But my question to the city attorney is, if there, is this building going to be demolished?
No, sir. No, they're going to turn into a library and a music center and the classrooms.
And the reason why I ask is, let's say something happened, y'all grew to where you moved to another location, then the new owners decided to rent that.
They couldn't. Well, they wouldn't be in compliance with the zoning. Because right now, it's all going to be, we're also reserving it all into one large lot, and the whole zoning of the lot will be R4 for a Montessori school. And so any other use other than a school will be non-conforming. Isn't that correct, Mac?
Well, I was bringing this to make sure that Mr. Shaw's point received full consideration.
Mr. President, the concern was more about the resident still being in there and ensuring that they weren't in there at the time of the rezoning. Because if the rezoning happened and they were still living there, which was a question at the time. But if it's on the record that the resident is no longer there and the lease is terminated, I mean, that's probably enough to move on. Like I said, we got to get to the bottom of why this isn't carrying forward because it was pretty distinct, my recollection.
Mr. Smith, my opinion is that the wording is sufficient to confirm that it's the sole purpose and that Mr. Shaw and Mr. Miller are correct.
The motion includes the three additions as read by Mr. Corley, correct? Mr. Shaw?
Yes, sir.
All right, and the second, Mr. Green?
Second.
You're in agreement?
Mr. President, have we had the hearing yet?
We're in the midst of the hearing right now. Well, no, you're right. We're still in the midst of the public hearing. Anybody else care to speak for or against this resolution?
Mr. President, I could just add, this is a great example of how government can easily quagmire a process. This gentleman, Mr. Miller, I think this is maybe the third time you've been here before us between work sessions and meetings, talking about this. Had this not been able to allow to go on, and it happens twice a year, and it's unfortunate if it weren't allowed to go on, that he would get caught up in a process that would have to wait three more weeks until the first meeting in September. So, Mr. Corley, I want to thank you and Ms. Dickerson for allowing us to move forward to get government out of the way of business and letting business transpire instead of trying to quagmire it down and add red tape. Mr. Shaw, Mr. Smith, Mr. Corley, Ms. Dickerson, thank y'all. Thank you.
Well, Mr. President, if I could address that very quickly.
Yes, sir.
The issue was not trying to slow business down. The issue was when this came before planning and zoning, there was somebody living in the house that had no intention of leaving at the time. So that was going to create a problem. So I think this is a great thing that's coming here. I'm 100% pro, the Montessori school's going to be great, great service to the residents. But we got to be very careful with those things because we can end up in a bigger quagmire than we intended. So certainly unfortunate that we went round and round like this, but I think it was in the interest of doing the best for the city and the surrounding residents.
In just a few minutes' time, we were able to settle what could have been a large issue. So anything else to the public hearing? If not, I'm closing the public hearing, and the chair is now ready for a motion.
Mr. President, I move for approval of resolution number 628720.
Second. A motion and a second. Any comments or questions from the council, from the audience? Once again, seeing hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Dis opposed, nay. The ayes have it, resolution passes. Next, we have ordinance 20-2489, Mr. Corley.
This ordinance amends the Hoover zoning ordinance to amend the rear and side setbacks for the legacy single-family residential district.
And once again, we'll start with a public hearing. Mr. Martin, do you have anything to include?
Just very quickly, this is to make a tweak to the legacy single-family residential district where, as I presented in the work session and at first reading, we have rear and side setbacks that offer two options for measuring. Those rear and side setbacks, and I wanted to make it abundantly clear that the one that is in play for a particular piece of property is the lesser of the two. And of course, this effort is to try to clean up nonconformities as we put this district into play in some of our established neighborhoods. So again, just a tweak to clarify that it's the lesser of the two measurements for rear and side setbacks that will be... rear and side setbacks that will be enforced. Thank you.
Very good. Any comments or questions from the council or the audience for this public hearing? Seeing, hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and...
Mr. President, I move for adoption of Ordinance 20-2489.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Once again, any comments or questions from the council or the audience? Seeing and hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Lada?
Aye.
Dr. Middleworks?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
The ordinance is adopted. That is the end of our action items. Now, we are to the comments and questions portion. First, anything from the council this evening? Officer, do we have anybody on the signing sheet? Mr. Smith or Mr. Lee's? Okay. Mr. Coe, nobody online. All right. I'm sure we'd like to, unless you're going to do it, Mr. Mayor?
I'll make sure everybody was aware Saturday, August 26th, Blue Park Village renovation and new people with the groundbreaking, so everybody up there, certainly a big event for this council and this administration, and I know that everybody would like to be a part of that, so I hope this is, it's 10 o'clock.
And secondly, we have a little bit of an election Tuesday next week. So hopefully, we will have a large turnout of citizens making their choices. Anything else from the council? Very good, we're adjourned.
That was a great meeting.
Not bad, not bad.
I gotta say, I enjoyed that one.